Good afternoon and thank you for attending the city council meeting for the city of International Falls for Monday, June 3, 2019. I would ask all present to please arise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would ask the administrator to note the roll call with all members of the council present. Move to the agenda. There are no additions or deletions. Your pleasure with the agenda, please.
Mr. Mayor, can I make an addition to the agenda? So I would move to approve the agenda with the addition of a discussion about concerts in the park and vendors.
Under new business.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councillor Drowba, second by Councillor Kraus to approve the agenda with the addition, under new business, item number five, that would be concerts in the park and vendors. And this, to be included, would need to, believe, have all members of the council Questions or discussion on the agenda or the motion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I would vote yes. Motion is carried and agenda is approved with the addition. Thank you. Move to the approval of minutes and we have the regular city council meeting of May the 20th. Those minutes, with the council's pleasure.
Make the motion.
Motion by Councillor Deech to approve.
Second.
Second by Councillor Buller. Discussion on the motion or the minutes.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
On page 5 of 6, under item E, I would like to add in the 1, 2, 3, the fourth paragraph after National Park made the request and, so it would read Voyagers National Park made the request and will assume the cost of sidewalk widening.
So are you talking about on the, I guess, what I call the headline on the side? Or are you talking about the main motion?
The main motion.
So to approve the widening of the sidewalk?
Motion made by Councillor Drowba to approve widening of the sidewalk at Voyagers National Park Headquarters and Maintenance Property to allow vehicle passing. Voyagers National Park made the request and will assume the cost of sidewalk widening, therefore no expense to the city.
Okay, so we would be adding the words made the sidewalk request?
Yes, with the word "and." Made the sidewalk request and will assume the cost of the sidewalk widening.
I guess we could do it one of two ways. We could ask the maker of the motion, and the second, if they're willing to accept that, or we could have an amendment to the motion.
I think we should accept it. I'll accept it as part of the motion.
Okay. And Councillor Buller? All right, so we have the motion to approve the agenda with the addition of the words made the sidewalk request and to be added to the motion with regard to National Park Headquarters with the sidewalk. Is that clear? City Administrator, your?
I am very clear.
Clear, okay, thank you. If there's further discussion with regard to the minutes. Hearing none, the chair would then place the question.
Aye.
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 And I would vote yes. Motion is carried. Minutes are approved with that change. Thank you. And then the second minutes would be the minutes of the public hearing for the municipal consent on Highway 53. And council's pleasure with those.
So moved.
Motion by Councillor Kraus.
Second.
Second by Councillor Buller. Questions or discussions with regard to the minutes or the motion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 I would vote yes. Motion is carried and minutes are approved. Thank you. Then move to the resolution on transfers and accounts payable. And we have the transfer to the general fund from the lodging tax fund of $453.34. Accounts payable claims for the city of International Falls, $265,198.41. Airport commission regular claims of $99,679.77. Airport commission terminal project phase two claims of $406,633.36. Runway reconstruction project phase one claims of $49,870. Runway reconstruction project phase two claims of $271,905.25. And phase three under the runway reconstruction project, $4,570.1. Council's pleasure with the resolution approving the transfers and the payment of claims.
So moved.
Motion by Councillor Buller.
Second.
Second by Councillor Deech to adopt the resolution. Discussion on the motion or the resolution? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I would vote yes. Motion is carried. Resolution is adopted, approving the transfers and the payments of claims. Thank you. Move to the audience. Any one of the audience that wishes to approach the council at this time that's not on the agenda? Not to be another opportunity later in the meeting. We'll move to the consent agenda. And under the consent agenda, we have one request, authorized travel and work expenses for the street commissioner to attend the Woodson Smith and Knowlting offices in Alexandria, Minnesota, on June 12th and 13th for the development of the GIS system. Council's pleasure with the consent agenda.
Aye. So moved.
Motion by Councillor Deech.
Second.
Second by Councillor Drowba.
Aye.
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 And I would vote yes. Motion is carried. Consent agenda is approved. Thank you. Move to new business and discuss the Midcontinent Communications Letter received May the 22nd regarding the elimination of the Canadian station CBC from Winnipeg, Manitoba. And this has been going on for some months while they, they knew they had dropped the carrying of that because the CBC from Winnipeg no longer made that signal available from Winnipeg through their systems that they had in towers in the area. And so the Midco did not bother to pick it up. I've done some research and found that there, that the signal is available and that it may be at a cost because the CBC, with all of their channels, have put those up on satellite under a private vendor. I think the question that I would put before the council is one, I've had a number of folks who have requested that we get the channel back. They enjoyed getting the Canadian news as well as hockey, which is carried regularly on the CBC. I guess the question is, I don't know how many folks are really affected by it in the city. I don't know whether or not, and I guess something that could be researched further by talking to Midco and saying, you know, understand that this is now available in another way and could you pick it up and make it available to the system here? I know that other systems in Warroad and Thief River, those two cities for sure, that their cable systems are picking it up, that signal, from this private firm in Canada. So I don't know exactly where to go with this, how much interest there would be, and whether or not it would be at a cost to the cable system users in International Falls.
Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Kraus, please.
It's my understanding that this is available over the air. You can pick up CBC with the over the air antenna right in your living room here in International Falls. So I think if it were something that somebody truly wanted, it is available over the air.
For sure it's available because I, my understanding that they used to have a relay station out here at Blackhawk, Ontario, and the signal was made. But if you were, if you're a cable subscriber, you would have to have an antenna on top of your house, you'd have to have a wire coming in, and I'm not sure how you would connect that to the system. I don't know, maybe there's people here with greater knowledge of TVs and how that system works, but...
I guess I'm looking at it from a different way.
Okay.
Doesn't, don't we have a set items of what is in the package that the city gets in our contract with Midco? Is this something that is in the contract that we're supposed to be receiving? Because if so, I think we would have to almost renegotiate the contract if we're not, not receiving what we were supposed to receive for whatever reason that a channel comes missing or is unavailable. And I don't know, I just look to see if I have the Midco contract here and I don't. But it just seems like if we have a contract with them and they're supposed to supply X amount of stations or specific stations and that is not happening, then I think we have the right to take a look at it. But if we don't have it in writing that we're supposed to be receiving the channel, I guess it's not, in my opinion, it's not up for even debate. They're just letting us know.
Well, and I don't know, in the world of cable systems, how often these channels become available or don't become available. I guess the question might be that you would, we would need to find out if the system, if the signal is no longer available to them at no cost and it's now available at a cost. They were offering this channel under their, I believe, under their basic cost to subscribers and then eliminated it. Now, whether they can just change, we'd have to take and look at the franchise rules, but I think they probably have that flexibility if a signal's not available. I don't know. So we'd need to sit down and read the franchise and see what is available there. Other thoughts on, and I don't know whether we should try doing a survey of cable users in the community to see if they are interested? Because I don't know how many users there are within the city, because folks have the opportunity to have other forms of the signals being, come to their home through satellite. So I just don't know how many users we have in the city and whether it'd be worthwhile trying to do a survey. Further discussion? Any action that anyone would want to put forth?
I think Cardy's got a point there, but if it's in the contract, we should check the contract out anyway.
Check the franchise and see what it states in there with regard to what they have to provide?
Start there and move forward, yeah.
Okay.
If it's...
Mr. Mayor, may I? Please.
If it's, it's my feeling that if it's not in the contract, then I don't think we have any grounds to force a business to provide a service if it's not contracted. That's just my opinion on the matter.
I will be happy to review the franchise with the administrator and if I need, city attorney, call upon the city attorney to help us. All right, no further questions or discussion with regard to that. We'll move to item two under new business and approve the engagement letter from Van Eywarden to provide Gatsby 75 services for the city. City Administrator?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, this is an engagement letter that I requested from Van Eywarden. Van Eywarden has been working with us for a few years now to, as an actuary, doing a, our Gatsby 67, 68, and now there's requirements for Gatsby 75 services. And so because the Gatsby 75 wasn't covered under our previous engagement letter, I asked them to prepare a new one and we're asking for the council to adopt this to allow them to continue to provide actuarial services for us and comply with the Gatsby 75 requirements.
Okay, council's pleasure then with approving the Gatsby 75 services.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner, Councillor Kraus. Second by Councillor Buller. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I would vote yes. Motion is carried and the approval of these services is, there, thank you. Item number three under new business is to acknowledge the resignation of employee Calvin Turbin, maintenance worker with the city, and authorize the Public Works Department supervision to hire at their discretion.
So moved.
Motion by Councillor Buller.
Second with regret.
Second by Councillor Kraus with regret. Questions or discussion?
Are, Mr. Mayor, are we, are we going to hire the same specific person? Because I know throughout the last couple of years, we've kind of reworked some of our positions and specifically in Public Works, and I was wondering if we're hiring the exact same position or if we are going to reword the job title or position?
I think it maybe depends, if I understand the contract, under the experience that the individual might have.
Mayor, council, the street commissioner and I have conferred about, this particular position is a maintenance worker, one position, and that would be the position that would be vacant. And if the street commissioner feels that that's the position of the work that we need fulfilled, then that would be the position he would advertise for. I have explored with him, we have another position that we don't, that's in the contract, we have nobody occupying it right now. It's paid a lesser salary, and that's a general maintenance labor position, I believe it is. And so he and I have discussed potentially filling that to assist in year-round work, maybe at a park department level, grounds and maintenance, more routine kinds of things, watering the hanging plants that we have downtown when the summer workers aren't around, as well as cleaning up garbage and those types of things. So, but right now, I think it's the street commissioner's intent to fulfill the maintenance worker, one position duties and responsibilities with this vacancy.
Okay, just as a quick sidebar, that second position that you just discussed that would be at a lesser pay, would that be a year-round position as well that we have not filled?
We have a classification in the contract with the 49ers for that position. We've never had anybody employed in that position because we've needed people to do more varied duties and responsibilities, so.
Okay.
But we've talked about potentially filling that position when we have a vacancy. It just depends on the type of work that needs to be done and the number of personnel that we have assigned and their skills and skill sets to do the work as to filling those.
Okay. Thank you, that's very informative.
So with the recent retirement of one of our employees and then this resignation, we have two vacancies now in the street department?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. Further questions or discussion? All right, we have the motion then to accept the resignation of Calvin Turbin with regret and authorizing the hire at the discretion of the Public Works Department supervisor. Further questions or discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I would vote yes. Motion is carried and approval is given. Thank you. Item number four under new business, schedule the committee of the whole meeting at 3:00 PM on Monday, June 17th to hear the financial statement audit from our auditor, Schlenner Is there a motion to schedule that meeting?
I would make the motion for the meeting at 3 o'clock, Monday, June 17th.
Motion by Councillor Drowba. Drowba.
I'll second Councillor Drowba's motion.
Second by Councillor Kraus. Apologize. Councillor Drowba.
Oh, it's okay. I just didn't expect that.
Questions or discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 And I would vote yes. Motion is carried and the committee of the whole meeting is scheduled for 3:00 PM on June 17th. Thank you. Item number five then is the additional item that Councillor Drowba had asked to be on the agenda, and that's concerts in the park and vendor. Councillor Drowba.
So a lot of people do know that we just started our concerts in the park series last week with Falls High School Band and Choir. Concerts in the park this year still has the same fiscal agent as we had last year, which is Icebox Radio Theater. But the day-to-day operations, other than the fiscal agent, has been taken over by Eye Falls Nice, which consists of Ted Saxon, who's in the audience, Tony Corpey and myself. And one of the things that we're trying to do is to bring more people into our park and see our local talent that we have. And one of the things that we wanted to do is bring in vendors, and we just wanted to have verification that we can do that because the last thing we want to do is have some vendors come into the park and get fined or asked to leave for whatever reason. We want to make sure that we're doing the right thing and up and up. So I just wanted to ask the question, if on Wednesdays we bring in vendors into the park that are licensed in the city, that that would be okay for our gatherings on Wednesday night?
Making a motion?
I don't know if I even need one. I just verbally spoke with the mayor about it. He said he didn't think that there was a problem, but I want to have verification from the council that that is okay.
Well, I think the organization has requested the use of the Smokey Bear Park and the band show for the concerts, and I think that gives you the use of Smokey Bear Park. I think as long as their vendors are licensed with the city, I think you would have the right to have them there. City Administrator?
Yeah, Mayor, I might offer that we should have an application from the respective vendors, and if there's multiple vendors that want to participate, we do require a certificate of liability insurance, and I believe that they're also licensed by the state, so we verify that they have their state...
Department of Health.
What's the name for it?
License.
No, the itinerant license, restaurant license, so we would just verify those through, and provided they provide that with a certificate of liability insurance, there shouldn't be any problems. So I think one application covering all those Wednesdays where we have music in the park would be, we can handle it that way with the council's authorization to approve that.
Okay. So when they receive a license from the city, they don't have to show liability insurance?
They do, but sometimes the dates are in there, the city's named as an additional insured, sometimes it identifies the dates. So I don't know if they already have a license, for instance, Cater For You or the Food Factory was, are two of them that I'm familiar with, that both operated during the mill shutdown, so they're licensed, but we authorize them to be at the park during certain dates. In that case, it was during the shutdown dates. So I think we would normally anticipate having an application that would specify the four Wednesdays, and we should do that separately, and provided, we may already have their other, it depends on who the vendors are as to whether or not they've, you know, if they attend multiple events and we have that information, it should be sufficient. Sometimes the certificate of liability insurance would be for a year time period, not necessarily for an event. So we just have to look at it on a vendor-by-vendor basis.
Mr. Mayor?
Administrator Anderson, is that an application that, refresh my memory, that you are able to approve without council action?
We typically have always brought those to the city council, but that's one of the things that we had asked for before the last Public Works Committee meeting. I had asked my staff to prepare a policy so that we can address that and try and simplify it so that it, so it's very clear what policies and procedures would apply to big events or normal events versus somebody just wanting to rent the pavilion shelter without having vendors and other activities going on. And we have not drafted that policy as yet, but we want to address that and bring it to the council at some point, probably starting at a committee of the whole meeting before it comes to the full council for action.
Follow-up on that?
Please.
The reason I bring it up is because we've got two concerts prior to our next council meeting, so it would be nice if there was a way to expedite the process, if it was in fact an option, to allow them to be utilized prior to, otherwise they're going to wait until the last concert in June-ish area. There's two concerts between now and the next meeting, so.
Mayor, I would just suggest that if the city council is comfortable in doing that, to go ahead and pass a motion to allow on concert Wednesdays that vendors that meet the other city requirements and submit an application that can be reviewed and approved by staff if all the submission requirements comply with our ordinance. Be very, and state rules, I'd be comfortable doing that.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Councillor Drowba then to allow the vendors to be in the park.
I'll second.
On Wednesdays, as long as they would meet city requirements. And a second by Councillor Kraus.
I think it's a great idea.
Questions or discussion? Not a question?
Aye.
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 And I would vote yes. Motion is carried and approval for the use of the park vendors is approved. Thank you. Any other new business?
Mayor.
Please.
I had a telephone call again on, and we addressed this earlier this year, about the deer population, and he was basically concerned in South International Falls. We've talked about this before, and I guess I couldn't tell him where we're going on this. The deer evidently cross Second Avenue East quite often, and it's a hazard with automobiles.
I think, if I recall, and City Administrator, correct me, that it's part of the zoning that is before us with part of the comprehensive plan. And once the council approves that and the planning commission has approved it, then it would be made, it could be made part of a license to hunt in the city.
Is there a timeline on this?
Mr. Mayor, if I may add, that's exactly correct. What we had talked about is having the comprehensive plan identify designated hunting areas within the city, and as part of the comprehensive... of the comprehensive plan approval process and the zoning ordinance approval process, it's necessary for the Planning Commission to hold a public hearing and then make recommendations of the city council. As part of those public hearings, we want to take public comment and input on whether or not, in this case, deer hunting areas would be appropriate. And is this something that the public wants to see, or would there be objections to that? And then that input would be part of what the council and the Planning Commission need to consider before you finally adopt the comprehensive plan. But we have entertained input on both sides, but primarily people who would like to see the option to be able to hunt in designated hunting areas. And so we, we're going to have those regulatory requirements within the zoning ordinance, and then the areas and the policy covered in the comprehensive plan in terms of areas that would be permissible for deer hunting in the city.
Is this going to happen before fall, deer season?
Well, I certainly hope so. We had talked just prior to the meeting starting, and we had met with our consultant, I believe it was on the 24th of April, and he indicated we would have a draft of the comprehensive plan in two to three weeks. I have not had that transmitted to me as yet. And as soon as I get it, I will forward that to the city council, as well as the project steering team on the comprehensive plan update process. But I can query him tomorrow too to see where he's at on it, when he expects to get it to us. So I can let the council know what kind of a timeframe he's on currently. But he's overdue getting it to us again.
Okay. Thank you.
And your hope, Councilor Deitch, would be to have it before the hunting season this fall? Is that?
That's my question, yes.
Okay.
My understanding is they would have to buy the regular, if it's archery, archery permit, DNR, and hunt during the regular DNR archery season. Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, they would have to meet the requirements of the state as far as licensing. And then the city can further have regulations with regard to their, the areas that they could be hunted in the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Droger.
May I just add to that? If this is something that we're legitimately looking at, I mean, we went through this four years ago, and we waited for the comprehensive plan. I've always said I have no issue with deer hunting in the city. I don't care one way or another. Whatever the council seems comfortable with and the community feels comfortable with, I will support. But four years ago, we came up with some rules and regulations of kind of what we were looking at. And it didn't seem to pass the muster test with everybody in our community. There were a lot of very angry people over it. So my suggestion was is, at this point, if we want to do this, we should be sitting in committee right now trying to hammer out the details of deer hunting in the city, rather than wait until we get our information from our comprehensive plan and then start the process to be looking because we're relatively under the belief that it's going to say that we should have deer hunting or deer hunting could be allowed. So if we already know that that's what we're expecting out of this, we should be looking at what our rules and regulations for the city are in committee within the next couple of weeks so that we can be ready in the fall, rather than trying to throw something together at the last minute.
Makes sense.
May I?
Please.
Because it will be a harvest. It will not be a hunt. There's no sport in it. So I'm not saying I'm against it, but it's, it would be more of a harvest to take the population down because there is no sport in it. They're pets. So it's just my opinion on the matter.
Mr. Mayor, I would add that my experience, and it's not, some of it's direct, some of it is not, but in some of the other communities I've worked in, the whole discussion of hunting deer is a very, very controversial and emotional issue for some people. You know, I've heard stories at some of our public meetings that there were deer chasing people's wives down the street and their kid, and they had to hide in the neighbor's house, literally. I mean, people were saying this, and this is a, you know, a well-respected citizen member. And I find that hard to believe. I know in another city I was in, they had a special hunt to manage the deer population in a reservoir that the city of Minneapolis had down in the city of Columbia Heights. And it just, there was just vehement opposition from anybody to do that. Because of your comment, Councilor Kraus, they're essentially, it's a slaughter. They're like people's pets, and people are accustomed to see them. They feed around their bird feeders and that type of thing. And there's some people who are vehemently opposed to any kind of a hunt like that, especially in the city if there's any risk for public safety or even perception of risk. So I'm not automatically assuming that. I think what's important is to have the public hearing process, have it part of our plan. The council may decide to take it out. They may say it's fine the way it's proposed. They may want to modify it in terms of the areas that it's allowed or not allowed. But until we get that public input and comment, I wouldn't presume it's going to go, I would know which way it's going to go because it can be a very emotional issue.
And lastly, I think it would be very interesting to see what the numbers of actual deer vehicle collisions are in the city, and that may be a barometer to gauge whether or not it's required. I know, I do remember vaguely that four years ago, I think that the city started to enforce the ban on feeding. It is illegal to feed deer in the city limits, but plenty of people do it. So, and that, it's an attractive, so.
Yeah, I think it's not just the collisions, it's the near collisions that this person was worried about. I mean, if you can picture the places by the South Falls Apartments, there's a little valley there, and the deer travel through there. And anybody that's in that area is aware of it. But anybody coming down Second Avenue East from the Highway 53 may not be.
Maybe we just put up a no-deer-crossing sign.
How many people pay attention to that, though?
We do have a detour to consider coming up here soon. With the Highway 53 reconstruction project, it could potentially be an issue.
Well, I think the suggestion of reviewing rules and regulations, I know the city of Duluth has a harvest, the city of Grand Rapids has, and so the Land Use and Legislation Committee may want to pull those up and have a look at those.
You could say that.
And the reality is, is that there was work that's already been done.
Yes.
I mean, that, I'm very certain the Administrator can get some of the information that was looked through and sifted through last, like, three, four years ago when we first took the issue up. So you're not restarting the wheel. I mean, it's already there.
Foundation's laid.
Okay, further questions or discussion with regard to that?
One more minor.
Yes, please.
On the pavement of Sherwood and Eighth Avenue East, is there a date when the pavers are planning on coming in and doing this?
I don't know what the Public Works Director has scheduled with any potential contractors. And I would assume he would be contracting with KGM, who's doing work at the airport and on the road, Highway 11 East. I just assume that. That may be incorrect. He may be talking to several contractors, including Bowman Construction and others.
Okay.
City Administrator?
Mayor, I would add that at a minimum, we would be getting at least two quotes. And so plans and specifications need to be completed, which I believe WSN is working on at present. I know that their surveyors have been out on Sherwood Drive, looking at the roughly 450 feet of that that'll be paved. And we'll get quotes, and then the council will authorize moving forward with one of those contractors. So I don't have a date for that yet, but it's in process.
Thank you.
Project is this summer, though. Project is slated for this summer.
Right, in addition to Fourteenth Avenue.
Okay.
Okay, further? Under new business? If not, we'll go to reports of boards, committees, and department heads. City Administrator?
Mayor, I don't have any report today. I would just add that the fire chief is not present tonight, so I can review his report briefly when we get to that point.
Please, if you want to do that now, that'd be fine.
I can. The chief is at training today, so he prepared his monthly report. You can see it was handed out today. This is the first workday in June. And you can see in the month of May that the fire department responded to six call-outs in the city. There was two residential fires, two gas leaks, one fuel spill, and then a carbon monoxide alarm. In the rural fire responses, there were four. All of those were for grass fires. And then they had their regular business meeting on the 16th of May. And then they had training with the blitz nozzle and an obstacle course training. As far as the ambulance activity in the month of May, this May, they had 83 911 calls. That compares to 74 for the same month last year. Brings our total for 2019 to 360. We had 35 transfers, which was significantly less than what we had in May of 2018. And we have about 184 transfer totals in 2019. So our total for 911 calls and transfers are at 544 through the month of May. They too had training on May 14th, had a regular business meeting, and then they were training with the Image Trend Elite program that the, that we have in the office here. And then you can see the detail that's attached to the cover sheet. And we've been reporting this way for about three months now. And so it provides a lot more detail and shows the times of various responses. So that's the report from the chief.
Councilor Droger, please.
Totally going to put you on the spot since you're acting fire chief tonight. So on the very first page, it says runs by city. How is that so incredibly skewed? Because International Falls has 114 runs, Cook has one, Duluth has one, Ore has one, and Rainier, which I'm really glad Rainier is keeping up with Duluth. But how is it that, is this just something that we have access? I don't understand.
This would be ambulance run report data. So we would have gone down to, potentially have taken somebody to Cook or gone to Cook for a transfer somewhere else. So you can see that the vast majority of ours were, the number of runs, there's 114 that were to International Falls. Duluth had one, as you pointed out, Cook had one, Ore had one, and then Rainier had one. I cannot speak to whether or not that is the point of origin. I assume that it is, but I can't, I can't say with certainty.
Okay. Good enough for me. I just, it just shocked me.
It's where they picked them up because, like, they picked them up as possible.
Okay, then that makes sense. I just didn't understand. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, further questions with regard to the fire department and ambulance department report? Further, City Administrator?
I have nothing further.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing special to report.
Thank you. Other department heads here. Move to reports to the mayor, council committee, boards, and commissions?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I went and had a discussion, well, probably four months ago, I had a discussion with Brad Nowan about the ambulance and where we were financially. And, you know, between the two of us, I just said, you know, we're in the hole. We know we've been in the hole. And maybe with the changing of our rates, we'll slowly but surely start to get out of that. I went and I spoke with him on Friday last week, and it does not appear as if changing any of our rates has affected anything on our fund balance for the ambulance. I do think that it is something we're going to have to address. After speaking with Brad, it seems as if when we have our conversation with Schwimmer and Winner, I'm glad that we have alliteration for our
Winner and winner?
Schwinner and winner for our auditors. But I think that they're going to tell us that we have to do something to account for this balance. It's about $600,000 right now. I would like to, and I'm not going to set a date now, but I think we need to be conscious of, we're going to have to do something about it. Because when we do get our audit, it's going to show that we have a fund balance of X amount of dollars. But the reality is, is that's not real. We're going to have to take $600,000, whether we do a loan transfer to the ambulance department or something else. We are going to have to somehow account for this $600,000 because we're not getting out of this hole. So, again, I'm not going to call for a budget and finance meeting at this point. But after we have our meeting in two weeks with our auditors, I think we should sit down and figure out what it is. So I want to give you guys that information before we go in and speak with our auditors, that that is an issue that we still have to look at. So that's all I have.
Mayor?
Good. Please, City Administrator?
If I may elaborate on that, I've been watching that very closely because it's a big concern of mine. And I appreciate your investigating into that further as well. As of the end of April, from the beginning of the year, I think our expenditures exceeded revenues by $127,000. And I'm doing this from memory after a week's vacation. So, but it's about $127,000. And I think the key month that we want to look at is how our revenues are in the month of May versus expenditures. And I say revenues in May, they're really based on runs that we had back in January. Because it takes us roughly 90 days to get reimbursement from the insurance companies, insurance carriers, particularly Medicare and Medicaid. It's very delayed. It's roughly 90 days. And we do contract with an outside billing agency, Expert T Billing. So May should be the key month where we've had a full 90 days after we've done the January billings to see how that new revenue structure, how much money we're actually generating in additional revenue, and try and equate it to a cost per run. That's difficult to do because if you're doing a run from South International Falls to our medical center, it's one thing. If you're doing a transfer from International Falls to Duluth and back, then the revenue is entirely different. So you really can't put a cost per run value on it. But when we look at the monthly activity, I'm really hoping that we're going to see an increase in the revenues. I have been keeping in touch with our consultant, Mike Metro, and he was anticipating and forecasting that based on our 2017 annual runs, that we should generate roughly 18% more in total revenue for the year with that revenue increase we did. And I'm not seeing it in the first few months, four months that we had in this year. And so I really want to see what happens in May, when we've got all of January's runs should be in or close to being in after this 90-day time periods elapsed. So it's going to be key to look at that because there is going to be a cost implication if we're not recovering, if we're not generating more revenues than expenses, we're going to have to do some, make some hard decisions.
Very good. Well-stated. Thank you. Further from council committees, boards, or commissions? Do you have the mayor's report? Go to the audience. Again, anyone in the audience wishes to approach the council at this time? Thank you. We have correspondence. Note there, the Convention Visitors Bureau minutes and Airport Commission meeting minutes. And then we have reminders. And I'd like to add to the list of reminders, tomorrow morning at 8:30, we'll be meeting with the county board with regard to Keenan Drive sidewalk. That's scheduled for 8:30 tomorrow morning at the county boardroom. On Wednesday, the 5th, we'll be, at 1:00, the Public Works Committee will be meeting to discuss three items. The sales tax resolution, the Highway 53 project, and then also the schedule of compliance with regard to the North Koochiching Area Sanitary District. And then on June the 11th, we have a blight committee meeting scheduled on that Tuesday. So in addition to those reminders that you see there, the special council meeting for June the 10th, and the next regular city council meeting on June 17th, there's a few meetings to attend. Further to come before the council at this time. Seeing and hearing none, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you.